I like to call this Monday, April 8th, regular council work session and meeting to order. Would everybody please rise? And let's remember all of those who passed away during the month. Please salute the flag. Mr. Dill, you want to do a poll call, please?
Uh, Mr. Pezza.
Here.
Ms. Cullen.
Here.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Here.
Mr. Cousins is absent. Uh, Ms. Figueroa.
Here.
Uh, Mr. Johnson is absent. Mr. Petrow, chief president. Mr. Adigezeppe.
Here. Okay, we'll go to the public. Anybody on this side of the room want to speak on anything? Anybody on this side of the room want to speak on anything? That ends public participation. Okay, we have, who's here to...
First goal station mobility hub design package from the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission/SEPTA. Uh, package was in your, uh, packet, was in your packet over the weekend. Marissa, you want to go to the podium, please?
Thank you. Um, so, as Mr. Dillon mentioned, we should have a packet outlining eight designs. And so I'll just go through this project really quickly. Um, I'm Marissa Volk. I'm a transportation planner with the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission, also known as DVRPC. DVRPC is the Metropolitan Planning Organization for the Philadelphia region, which includes Bucks County and Bristol Borough. SEPTA and DVRPC have partnered with Bristol Borough on a quick build mobility hub project that will make accessing Bristol station area safer and more comfortable for pedestrians and bicyclists, current and potential riders, and residents throughout the adjacent communities. We are defining a quick build project as one that can be installed at the station or on nearby streets without needing to pour new concrete or to change any permanent features of the station area. So in other words, we are working to build upon the infrastructure that already exists at the station and in the station area. Members of Borough Council received in their packet illustrations of eight proposed designs that are located on and off the station property. These designs have been identified as priorities by Bristol Borough staff and leadership in previous working group meetings. Designs fall into four categories. The first is beautification efforts like historical murals to add to the efforts already underway by the Borough. The second is creating visible connections to the nearby trail network and bus stops, including SEPTA and Rush Bus. Uh, Rush Bus and SEPTA would produce and pay for all signage. Uh, and I expect that circuit trails would also provide and pay for trail signage. Uh, the third category of improvement is pedestrian improvements. Those would include painted curb extensions similar to the ones on Mill and Radcliffe. Number four is bicycle improvements like shared lane bicycle markings, also known as sharrows. Uh, if the package is approved, Bristol Public Works will provide in-kind support by installing design elements. This project is an opportunity to test bike and pedestrian improvements on our dime. Uh, so SEPTA and DVRPC will cover all costs associated with the design package, which are estimated to total $12,500. There will be no direct cost to Bristol Borough to implement these designs. Um, and I will now take any questions from Borough Council about the design package or the project.
How are you determining, um, the content of the murals? Just out of curiosity.
Yeah, so we've had a few initial conversations with the Borough leadership and staff about previous murals and what the Borough might be interested in. Um, so far, we've landed on historical themes. And the Borough has provided, uh, a few images as inspiration, and those are included in the packet.
Yeah, I saw those, yeah.
Um, so it might not be those exactly, but those are kind of the inspiration that we're working with for the murals.
Thank you.
So just so council knows, Marissa, this has nothing to do with the entire overall project that the station's all getting redone. SEPTA's putting like 11 million, we've been in negotiations with them, and they're redoing Garden Street. Where, the whole thing's getting redone with new lighting and all that.
Yes.
So this is just something for bike racks and some things like that right now?
Yes, so, in theory, the projects are connected because the capital improvements, uh, will be focused on ADA accessibility and bringing the station up to code and reimagining what the station area might look like. And so that could also include pedestrian and bicycle improvements. But this project is working in the near term. Uh, so we won't be pouring any new concrete or redesigning.
Right, I just didn't want council to think that this, this is totally separate from what we've been working on.
Yes, this is totally a separate budget project. And hopefully, they communicate with each other and they improve walkability and bikability, but they're separate.
Amanda, you want to add to this, or...
Sure, uh, so ideally, the project would be installed, uh, over summer or early fall. I think depending on when we can all, uh, come to agreement about things like what the mural content will be and, um, have a finalized, uh, designs that are ready to implement by, um, Public Works. So I imagine around September would be our, our goal to have these things installed.
Sure. So, yeah, some of the priorities that DVRPC had outlined, and we've reviewed at a staff consultant level at this point, was those murals that Marissa had touched on. And also, um, she had identified the, the Bucks County Transport Rush Bus that comes into the train station, doesn't currently have any sort of identification or stop sign or, you know, signage available, um, at, at that location now. So I think you've been in coordination with Bucks County Transport and potentially with, um, you said with circuit trails as well, correct? To get some additional signage, um, again, at no cost to the Borough. That would be kind of, um, between DVRPC and SEPTA and Bucks County Transport for the Rush Bus. Um, so those are probably the two, um, major items we had discussed throughout this process. But, you know, Marissa does have several, um, other items outlined, uh, in the, in the packets. So, um, I think you're looking for some sort of approval vote from council at some point, right?
Ideally, tonight, if that's possible, to get an approval vote. Um, but I'm also available to answer any more questions, um, or if Bristol needs more time.
This design of this bike rack, is that something new? It seems very skinny, just, I don't think, there's, it's spread out, so foiling. And on Washington Street, there's, there's only two racks, and on Garden Street, there's four?
Yes, so with the bike rack murals, uh, the goal is to increase visibility of the bike racks. I agree, I think they're a little bit hidden away or off the street right now. And so before the whole station is redeveloped, uh, and when it is, uh, the vision is to have more shelter for people waiting for Rush Bus, for people parking their bikes, um, more of an overhang than there is right now, and more bike racks, more and improved bike racks. Uh, but in the near term, our goal is to, um, make the bike rack area a little bit more comfortable to park your bike, a little bit more visible, and also contribute to the beautification efforts.
I mean, I could see it being part of the beautification, but it looks like you could probably get four bikes on it if that...
Yeah, and I...
Why go through this effort if we're not going to put...
Additional bikes.
Additional bike racks there to make it look like it's...
Yes.
Like it's a bike rack instead of just to, it'll end up in a...
Yes, and I, I...
Playground.
I, the, the goal would be to include more bike racks in the longer-term project. But the limitations of this project is we aren't able to pour new concrete or, um, to, to implement those U-racks. We would need to, uh, go kind of beyond a quick build mentality.
You've got limited funds, what you could do with this project.
Yes.
So do you need us to pick a, uh, plan tonight? Or do you need us just to say we approve this at the minute?
Uh, just to approve. So the budget that we've identified would cover the full...
So we're gonna have only, we'll make, put on our agenda this evening to accept a proposal. And then Maria, I know they're working with Amanda, going over this project, so...
Can I just ask one more quick question? Um, the benches, um, I know that there's a few benches in town that are set up so that the, uh, so, more or less, if someone can't lay on them?
Yes.
Is, is that how these are going to be built?
Yes, uh, Bristol Borough identified that as a priority. So we'll make sure that the benches are facilitating that.
Any other questions? Let's go, Marissa.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thanks for coming in. So Gene Williams is in here, so Bill, we'll go with you next.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to do a brief update on the activities of Raising the Bar over the last year and a half or so. I, too, am a basketball fan, so I will be brief and get out of here and, uh, do a, do the people's business and then go watch the basketball. Okay, as I said, it's a project update with 23, 24 from Raising the Bar. I'd like to direct your attention to the screen behind you. Um, and I want to give you a warning. The first slide I'm about to show is a little scary and a little ugly. You may recognize it. That's what many of the storefronts looked like on Mill Street a little bit more than 10 years ago. We had boarded up buildings, we had, uh, brown paper in the windows, we had peeling paint, we had facades, they were crumbling. Uh, since then, we've done, we've received three facade grants from DCED totaling, totaling $150,000. We were able to do 30 different facades over that time period. So we don't have to dwell on that. We know the story, we know the tremendous success story that Mill Street has, has experienced over the last several years. But this makes up for it, doesn't it? When you see that kind of headline in the business section of the Philadelphia Inquirer, a resi, a renaissance in Bristol, not to mention, uh, the other, the other front page stories we get in other publications. That doesn't happen by accident. There was a time when we used to beg the media to come to Bristol to cover the good things that we thought were happening, okay? That is not the case anymore. Now they call us. Now they want exposure, they want to be part of it. Not only that, but people wishing to locate here, wishing to invest here, are coming as well. Uh, if you go to the next slide, that building, just as an example, it doesn't happen by accident. The publications, the, the, the exposure we're getting in the media, the investment that we're getting from out of town, it doesn't come by accident. It comes because of, although I'm here to talk about Raising the Bar, I want to talk about you for a minute. It comes about because people now have the clear perception that Bristol Borough is a very well-run borough, that it is fiscally responsible, it has solid government leadership, our police department runs very efficiently, our public services are provided very efficiently. And couple that with the great synergy, the partnership, that we've developed between community volunteers such as Raising the Bar and skilled marketing initiatives, has led to an enhancement of investor confidence. We used to be the laughing stock of Bucks County. Now we are one of the hottest discussions in Bucks County. And we're proud of that. That's due in large part to what you've done and what we've tried to do in cooperation with you. And of course, what this does, when people say, "Well, how does this help me?" When we expand our tax base, we don't have to stress our tax rate. And that makes it better for all taxpayers. So that's something you know, but it doesn't, it doesn't hurt to bear repeating now and then. And, and although I'm here to talk about Raising the Bar, we are just flooded with so many outstanding organizations in town, as you know, okay? The Sunday Stroll Committee, they, they're still cultural and historical foundation. The Lions and their summer concerts, the Rotary. What the theater does to bring people to town. All the various epic monuments and groups you see at the bottom who sponsor activities during the summer. Uh, so this, the great thing is that good people are deeply involved in all of these organizations, and they come together in a very harmonious way to support what you do, and it really helps the Borough. We get our money, and I'm going to talk to you tonight a little bit about how we spend our money, but we get our money through two sources, grants and donations, grants and fundraisers. Uh, so I thought it'd be a good idea to tell you who's asking for the money. So there, that's our board, that's our board directors. There are 10 of us, and they are listed there. Uh, I'm happy to say to Sam Scialzo, who's here tonight, in the back, is our newest member of the board, and we're happy to have him. And every member of this board brings a different thing to the party. Some have social media skills, some have, have marketing skills, some have engineering skills, whatever it might be. And we come together in a pretty good mesh of skills and cooperation. About 40 years ago, I attended a flight sponsored by Congressman Peter Kozmier, if you're old enough to remember. Uh, he, he flew about 30 of us to Lowell, Massachusetts. Lou, were you part of that?
No.
He flew about 30 of us to Lowell, Massachusetts to show us what a town that was going through a revival, what a town was doing with adaptive reuse of old industrial mills. Lowell was a, was a textile community. Uh, and, and one of the things we learned there is one of the things they, they preached was that you can do a lot with your community with lighting. You can do a lot with a town, with a street or an area of town with the right kind of lighting. So with that in mind, uh, we, we decided that since we had done a lot on Mill Street, and Mill Street has now taken on a life of its own, right? The investors are there, now you don't have to reach out to anybody anymore. The realtors will tell you that, they're knocking on the door. But we wanted to have a ripple effect. We wanted to expand to Market Street. So we made this year, and in the latter half of last year, the year when we expanded to Market Street. So the first thing we did, and I'm going to talk about a bunch of little things that add up to something big, okay? So here, this, for example, is the first thing we did. We approached the Masonic Lodge, which is a real gem for Bristol Borough. It was constituted in 1780. And this is the rear entrance to the lodge that's on Market Street. And it was in serious disrepair. Uh, there were, there were weeds on the ground, there was no fencing, but the sign was deteriorating. And we approached them, and we said, "We'll pay for it. We'll match what you spend if you do something to enhance the back of your property." And the result was, they put down, we put down tipple, we put up the new ornate fencing, we refurbished the sign and lit it, and there'll be more done there. But that's, you know, we went to them, and they said, "Yes, let's do it." The next thing, a block away, is the rehearsal studio for Bristol Riverside Theater. So what we're talking about is taking a bunch of assets that already existed on the street and letting them shine a little bit, okay? So if you remember, Bristol Riverside Theater rehearsal studio, from the time it was open, always had these long black shades blocking the window. It's all, it's just a black shaded window. And we, we went to them and said, "Why don't we do something to expand upon the theatrical nature of what the building is and make it feel a little bit more like we have a, like a theatrical district?" And so we said, "We will pay for it if you allow us to put those signs in the window that, that broadcast the next place, and also to replace the lighting, to enhance the lighting." And they said, "Yes." So we paid for it. They got the signage, and we put it in, and it's another asset on the street. Just another pleasant thing to look at when you're going down the street. Uh, wrong direction. Okay, next, and this, we're really proud of this. I had my eye on this clock tower, or this bell tower, rather, for a long time. I was hoping the chief was here to remind me of the terminology on how old the Bristol Fire Company is. I believe it is, uh, the oldest building in continuous operation as a fire company in Pennsylvania, okay? And the bell tower is well over, and the bell is well over 100 years old, 150 years old. So again, we went to the fire company, and we said, "We will pay for the lighting, we will pay for the installation and the insurance if you let us light up this tower." And they said, "Great, let's do it." You can see this now from, when you turn on the market from Radcliffe, when you see, you can see it from Mill Street, you can see it from Old Thirteenth. So it's, uh, something we're really proud of. Next, we don't have to spend too much time, well, actually, I'm going to go on to the next. Okay. We did the same thing with the Friends Meeting House. I mean, that building was established in 1711. It's, it's, I think it's the second oldest Break Your Friends Meeting House in Pennsylvania. And we went to them and said, "Look, you have a beautiful structure. We think it could be enhanced by lighting. Let us pay for it. We'll pay for the lighting, we'll pay for the installation if you let us do it." And they said, "Yes," and there it is. And we think it's just another nice piece of your trip down Market Street. We don't have to say much about this. We had the big celebration last spring when we unveiled the 60 by 30 mural that tells the maritime history of part of Bristol Borough. The Market Street was, Carl LeBeau, who's probably the best-known historian now in Bucks County, said that Bristol Market Street port was the largest and most actively used port in Bucks County for, in the 1700s. Okay, so we wanted to tell that story. So we did that, and we did it along with a, with a very appealing plaza. Moving on to the end of the street, uh, the Bristol Stomp mural, which we now know is a year and a half old or so. It was, it was paid for by William Penn Bank. And, uh, it tells a cultural history, a pop culture history of something very significant in Bristol. So putting all that together, and, and that doesn't even take into account in the very beginning of Market Street, where we had one of the best-known restaurants in Bucks County, and where Eric Foreman just did a beautiful job in decorating a tree there that looks so good. And, and, you know, and that points out the ripple effect of doing good things. Because I know since Eric did that tree, the Lions have discussed whether they can light a tree down at the wharf, and they're discussing different ways they might be able to do that. When people see good things, they want to be part of it, and they want to expand upon it.
Eric did that smokestack there, too.
And he did the smokestack as well. Uh, our vice president, uh, Luke Wade, is a, is a very talented graphic artist. And we decided we wanted to have heritage trail markers along Market Street. If we, if we're, if we're proud of these buildings, we wanted to tell a story. And so we, we erected six of these trail markers, and we intend to do more. Uh, and I want to take you just real quick through, this one tells the story of the Riverport Plaza, which I won't dwell on it, but it's right there at the Riverport site. Uh, this one, also at the Riverport site. You know, we, we know that what used to be at that, at that spot was a pre-revolutionary war building that everyone wished we could have saved. It was beyond repair, it couldn't be saved, and yet it had a history to it. So when we put up the, the marker there, Luke Wade did an artist rendering of what the building used to look like and told a little bit of that story as well, to preserve that piece of art history. The Bristol Friends Meeting House, we, we did one for them as well. And in this case, uh, the Friends shared the cost with Raising the Bar. So we, uh, we were able to do that. Partnerships are nice. And there's another one at the Friends Meeting House. It's, it's the Bristol Meeting House Labyrinth. I didn't know what a labyrinth was until Jim Fine, a dear lifelong friend, said that these things are in the, in the, in churches and cathedrals around the world of all faiths. And basically, you go there, and you can walk the labyrinth. There's a series of concentric circles. You can meditate, you can, you can, uh, pray, you can just contemplate things as you walk around in a peaceful environment. And, uh, they put that up to tell the story of that as well. And the Friends paid for that. So again, it was like a stimulus that they bought into, and we're pleased that they did. The Bristol Fire Company got a plaque as well. In this case, Raising the Bar shared the cost with the Sunday Stroll Committee that has been very generous and very supportive of things that, that the Borough wants to do. And you might notice the firehouse there, when you're looking at it, it's two stories high. The firehouse today is three stories high. And what I didn't know is that that third story was added because that's where the council met, that's where the Borough Council met for a period of time, until the later council chambers were built. So it's, it's an interesting story. One of the real good things about this, and there's the Bristol Stomp mural that we're familiar with, that tells a story of that as well. So we, we hope to do more, we're meeting with the mayor. Uh, we hope to do more to tell our industrial history somewhere around the upper end of Radcliffe Street. And we hoped to be able to share some of that tonight, but we don't have enough information yet. We get our money, as I said, from grants. And we have some really good grant writers on our committee. We have a high track record of getting those grants because success breeds success. You can demonstrate that you've gotten the grant, you've implemented it well, uh, you're more likely to get another. And so we've had a lot of success with that. But we also get donations from people. So what you're seeing there is that we had a commemorative brick sale where people could purchase a brick and, and memorialize their family name or a loved one or a business or an event, life event or whatever. So far, we've sold the equivalent of 200 bricks. And that tells me the level of community support. But what's important to me when we do that as well, what's important to us, is that we want Bristol citizens to say, "I'm part of that. I helped put that plaza there, I helped light the, the bell tower, I helped light the Friends Meeting House." That gives them a sense of pride and a, and a sense of ownership, and that's important to us. Another thing we did recently is we, uh, we took a half-page ad, which was not inexpensive, where we took a half-page ad in Bucks County Magazine. Bucks County Magazine is a fairly prestigious magazine that mostly has a circulation in central Bucks County. And we wanted to put Bristol's light shining there as well, so we created this half-page ad and, uh, put it in, and gotten a lot of feedback from it that was very positive. And the QR code, if you hit the QR code there, it takes people to the Visit Bristol Borough website, uh, which is run by Raising the Bar and paid for by Raising the Bar. And, uh, Andrew Laurenti, uh, basically manages it along with Elisa Bax. So, yes, so we, we have, we have the Visit Bristol Borough website that has a link to all of the major restaurants in town. It has a link to all the major retailers, specialty retailers. And, and it's a, it's a nice tool. So people, people, and there's no fee for it. We, we provide this service to all the businesses at our expense, and it's a good way for people to, uh, to see what's going on in town. So what are we, what are we planning next? One of the nice things about Raising the Bar, as I said, there's no, there's no membership. It's a 10-member board, but beyond that, if people say, "Well, how do I get involved in Raising the Bar?" I say, "You just did. All you have to do is say, 'I want to get involved, I want to do something positive, I want to help,' and that, uh, that's all you need." So this is, uh, Ryan Florrick, who runs, who manages the Awesome Little Cupcakes, new business on Market Street, which is a really cool place if you haven't visited it. Uh, Ryan took it upon himself to make this map of the business district in town. It's color-coded, it's, it's legend, it's very clear. And, uh, we're going to meet with Mr. Dillon. We'd like to put one of these in the kiosks at, at each end of, of the street, one at the riverfront and one at, uh, one at, one in Lee.
You can just switch that.
Good?
Come over here, Ralph.
So we're going to put, we're going, we'd like to put one of these in each of the kiosks. And there's going to have a QR, a QR code on there as well so that a, a resident or a visitor, rather, can click on the QR code. It will take them to this site, they can download it to their phone, and they won't be tied to, you know, they won't be tethered to. In addition to that, we're going to put it, we pay to have it inserted in the Bristol Buzz magazine that has, that has a growing circulation. And then finally, we're going to get some printed, and we'll put them in the Grundy Library at different places where people can find it. One of our real disappointments is that we tried really hard to have flowers hanging baskets on Mill Street, right, Ralph? We, we, we paid for it, we paid to water it, we got a generous donation from the Sunday Stroll to help sponsor it. We put beautiful baskets on 90 different hooks. We watered it, we paid to have it watered. The Fire Company, in addition, watered it on nights when, when we weren't paying to have it watered. We also had the shopkeepers watering it. We bought pulleys so we could bring the baskets down. It didn't matter, it was too hot, too dry, and they died. And it's just impossible to sustain. So our board said unanimously, I said, "Should we have flowers this year?" And it was unanimous, "No." So we want to do something different. And what we're hoping to do is put some attractive flags on the poles to take the place of the flowers. Now I know that for now, uh, Bob Markey is doing tremendous work with, uh, BCHF and, and the Borough to, uh, conceptualize some flags to be hanging on the poles in Radcliffe and Mill. What we'd like to do is, once that shelf light is over, which probably, which won't be till, I guess, November or so, uh, we'd like to be able to have a dialogue with the Borough and how we can help to pay for putting up something that we want up there. In addition, we'd like to do this on Bath Street. Uh, I've spoken to Betty and Lee about this. We'd like to do something like this on Bath Street, we'd also like to do something like this on Market Street. So that, that remains for discussion. Another project, uh, on the 100 block of Mill Street, there's an alley that we'd all been looking at all of our lives. It runs between Penn's Community Bank and, and the new condos. And it runs, it's a clear run, it's a pleasant run, right to the parking lot. And no one uses it. Uh, what we propose is that we light this... What we proposed is that we light this, again, at our expense. We light it, we put up some kind of a very cool entranceway, give it a name, and let people take that walk to the parking lot without having to walk, it's equivalent of almost three additional blocks if you have to go all the way around the condos and then back up the hill to get where you're going. We talked to the owner of the building, because the alley, Sally tells me the alley is owned by the condos, not by the bank. And they were very excited to hear we were interested in doing that. They're going to put the entrance to the building on the side. So they said, we were already going to do some things, but they like what we were talking about as well. So we're going to get together with them, try to enhance that. And we're open to suggestions. And the last thing, we don't want that plaza that we created to be a stagnant place or an empty, dead place. We want it to be vibrant. And so we want to have a series of concerts for little kids or for adults, where we would have a family night. Kids would come and learn, and maybe little kids could sing karaoke. They could learn how to line dance. They could hear a children's performer singing Puff the Maggot Dragon or whatever. But we want it to be the kind of place where maybe once a week or at least once a month, we do some of those kinds of things there. And of course, we pay for that as well. And we're always looking for sponsors. So if anyone thinks they'd like to be part of sponsoring one of those events, please contact us. And that's it. So I wanted to, again, give you an update on what we were doing and where we plan to go. And congratulate you for the remarkable work you've done and look forward to doing it together.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Paul. Any questions?
Very nice.
Have I got any questions?
Nope.
No. All right, thanks a lot. Thank you.
All right, Chief. You have anything? Good.
A couple of things. So first thing is, I just want to piggyback off what Mr. Pezza said, as he briefly mentioned. Him and I met out at the old book factory as we know it, which is a huge gateway into town. And, you know, I had the idea of doing the Lacan Lake murals for the industry to embrace our industrial history. He contacted me and said, you know, let's look at this together. We've been raising the bar, may have some money and some access to grants. And hopefully, in a perfect world in the near future, we can do something along that old book factory beside and really light it up and embrace what our history once was with the wool mills, the planes, the ships we used to build, which I think would be great for that gateway. So I just wanted to talk on that. I just wanted to also mention that we had a meeting at 5:45, which was a hearing for Drift on Mill, who's getting their liquor license transfer, was approved. I get texts, I get calls. People ask me, hey, what's going on with that new restaurant? So I'm happy to let you know that the council unanimously approved their liquor license transfer. So hopefully, they're open soon. I've seen the pictures and everything on their Instagram. And the place looks pretty amazing inside. From a police standpoint, we are going to do a sergeant's test come June, probably the last week of June. The chief will distribute the pertinent dates to the members of the department so they can give their letter of intent and pick up their practice test when necessary. I wanted to mention that this upcoming Saturday, April 13, 11:00 a.m., is the Little League grand opening. They will do their usual parade down Jefferson to the ball field, where they will open up Little League at an 11:30 a.m. celebration rate at Memorial Field. Streetsweepers started. So for those of you that see the Streetsweepers going around, just note tickets will start on April 18. So please move your cars. We don't want to give tickets. We just want to clean the streets for the residents and the neighbors. So please move your cars as necessary so that we can clean the streets while the weather's nice all the way until fall and winter. I also wanted to let the residents know that Mill Street, the intersection of Mill and Racklough, will be reopened tomorrow morning. So we are going to reopen it. The work is done. The only thing left is some lighting that's going to be done in the upcoming weeks. For those of you that haven't taken the time to walk down there, that intersection is absolutely gorgeous. It is definitely much safer. And I think everyone's going to be extremely impressed when they see that intersection. We will do more of a grand opening ribbon cutting at a later date. But we want to get it open for the residents and the business as soon as possible. The last thing I want to mention is I have a huge announcement for the residents of the borough, specifically those in Harriman and those along Trenton Avenue. We have received a $1.7 million grant from Congressman Fitzpatrick's office to put up a sound wall along our rail spur there. So myself, I started talking to Fitzpatrick's office long before ever being the mayor. Councilman Pezza, Councilman Cullen, Mr. Dylan, council president was involved. We've had numerous meetings out there. As always, the congressman, you know, came forward and said, like, what could we do? And, you know, we said, we would love a sound wall. Like, we need a sound wall. There's engines running. We've lived with the passenger trains for years. But it's gotten worse with the boxcars and things of that nature, the freight liners, which is causing a nuisance for a lot of those residents down in Trenton. So our goal is to hopefully put a sound wall up from Green Lane all the way down to Garfield Street. There's a lot of legwork to do, but we can't thank the congressman enough, Congressman Fitzpatrick, your council people, your council president, your borough manager. You know, we put a lot of time and effort into making this happen. And it's going to be some legwork with a sound study and determining what that wall's going to look like. But I am extremely happy for the residents of Harriman that we have $1.7 million to put towards that sound wall.
Great job.
That's great.
And I'll end on that note.
I know Lorraine's happy.
Very happy. So is Greg.
I know.
We are really thrilled. It's been a long time coming.
Any questions for the mayor and chief? Lorraine, you have anything?
I don't have anything.
Greg?
No, just, I want to thank Maria for leading the townwide cleanup. And Lorraine and I gave her a few spots that we wanted to focus on. But if anyone in the, you know, in the East Ward has some thoughts on some other spots we mentioned, obviously, at the Green Lane Underpass, which is something that Lorraine and I have been intimately involved in, getting corrected in many ways. And we would love to hear from you if you have any questions or any spots that you think would benefit from a townwide cleanup. So that's all I have.
Yes. The cleanup is scheduled for April 27. Rain date, the 28. I also want to let everyone know, some people already know, but for those that don't know, I was diagnosed with cancer. And I will be undergoing surgery prior to the cleanup. So for this year, I will not be able to physically participate in the cleanup. I will be there handing out supplies and stuff. But I will not be able to physically go out and team up with Amtrak, like I did last year, to physically clean up. So with that being said, I am asking everyone to come out and help clean the whole town. So even if it's just an area that you can just do for an hour, come out and help us clean up. And so like the flyer says, let's team up to clean up. So with that being said, I also want to note that the Divine family would like to invite everyone to the memorial bench dedication in memory of their daughter Gabby Divine. Flyer, I believe, is it going to be, is it theme purpose there?
It's in there.
Okay. The dedication will take place on May 3 at 12:45 p.m. at the Bristol High School track. And I have to say that the bench is a beautiful piece. So I would encourage everyone to attend.
Louie?
Yes. I just have a notice here. The Rotary Club of Bristol, which is celebrating its 100th anniversary this year.
Wow.
They're having a pasta dinner on Sunday, April 21, from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. at the Snyder Girardi School. It's $12 per person, $8 for students. Children under five are free. And the tickets are available at CBM and Great IDs, Harris Comfort, Mignonijewelry, and the Tax Office. And all the proceeds go to the Rotary Scholarship Fund. Last year, the scholarship fund gave over $20,000 out in scholarships to the, mostly Bristol students. But there are some in the area other than just the Borough School. So...
Luke, can you buy a ticket there as well?
You can also buy at the door, yes. So it's a good way to help us continue to support the scholarship fund.
That's it. Luke, there is a question on Facebook about takeout. Is it available for takeout?
Yes, there is takeout available.
Right there?
Right there.
Lee, you have anything?
Well, first and foremost, I apologize for my tardiness. I was attending NGHHS for one of my former students. So I do apologize. Again, just what I regret last month. Just continue patience as, you know, work's being done in town. I know it's, again, I know it's, oh, God, I go this way, this way. But again, all the efforts are going to make the town, will be the town, should be, will be. So again, thank you for your patience.
And you're being very modest. So why don't you tell us where you work tonight?
Yeah, please, please, for real.
Because that's an honor.
That is an honor.
That your student chose you.
Okay. So I had a former student, fifth grader, and she's now in eighth grade. She's going on to the tech school. But she was named National Junior Honor Society and named too to the National Junior Society and chose me as her mentor teacher. So I'm very honored and privileged and blessed to have been a part of that in a young person's life. So that's why I'm here.
You're a good guy, buddy.
Yes, he is. He is.
You deserve the credit.
Yeah, on that note, I just wanted to let our constituents down on Otter Street. At the end of Otter Street, there was some speeding going on. And people were concerned. And me and Lee talked about it. And then we got to speak to Joe. And we set up a speed trap down there. And we even, I think, put a speed sign down there. So it's that time of year, the weather gets warm. A lot of people like to cut through Linden and Maple and all that. If you have any problems with traffic speeding and all that, just give me or Lee a call or even the borough. Well, we're trying to do the best we can because speeding seems to be an issue all through the town. I also, for some of you that might not know, I also work with Tina Davis. I work in her office now. And we have a new advanced care planning that's going to be given us the service for free. So I know this is important to some people. It is a legal document that states your medical care wishes and lists the names of people who can make those decisions if you're unable to do so. You can call there at 267-580-2660. I'm there Monday through Friday. You can schedule an appointment to come in, and these services will be done for free. It's called Advanced Directive with Support of Trained Faciles. So please, if you need this kind of advice or help, there's certain dates that we'll be doing it. And I'd like to see anybody who needs it reach out to us. And that's it.
I have a couple of things. One, we had an executive session meeting on Thursday of last week to discuss negotiations.
Personnel negotiations.
Negotiations. So I just want to put that on the record so everybody understands that. I just want to touch on a couple of things that Bill said about, you know, grants and different things. And like my son said tonight, 1.7 million. I think that we've been so fortunate in my twenty-some years here that we took in millions and millions and millions of dollars. And it's because there's a trust with politicians, Democrats and Republicans, that they know when we get involved in a project, we get it done. And we have great engineers. We're ready to go. And when they say the money's available, you know, we hit the ground running. So council, you're doing a great job. And that's why they have a lot of faith in what we're doing. The other thing is, Maria, we wish you luck. We know you may not be making every meeting moving forward, but you're in our prayers and...
You're going to kill it.
You'll get through it. God will be with you.
I'm by your side.
I know you are.
We know you are.
And the only thing is, I think that Maria mentioned about the Gabby Divine Memorial Bank's dedication on Friday, May 3, at 12:45 at the track. I think Divine family, out of respect for them, it's very difficult for what they have to endure that if we could clear our schedule to show up for that event, would be nice to see everybody's there for a half hour, an hour. So if we can get there, it would be great. And that's about all I have. Anybody have anything else? Mr. Dylan, Duck? All right, so we're going to go into our regular council meeting. Oh, I want to talk about the painting, I'm sorry. So we had a company here, we need to start sprucing. We're talking about sprucing up the town. We need to spruce our building up again. So there's a company that came. They're going to repaint the whole exterior building, power wash it, paint everything. If you look at it, it's in bad shape. There's a lot of rotted wood. They're also a restoration company. And then they're going to come inside. If you can see, there's leaks on the wall. There's leaks out here above the glass when you walk out. We had all the roof patched and things like that. So it's on the agenda tonight. They're called PR Painting. And they're from...
Worsher.
Worsher? Right. They came out and they gave us a quote. They're a co-star dealer. So we feel confident that they're going to do a good job painting the exterior and interior of the building. And that's all I have. Any questions on anything? All right, so I'm going to open up the second part of the meeting. Public comment on this side, public comment on this side. That ends public participation.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to accept the council meeting minutes for March 11, 2024, to accept the treasurer's report for January 2024, to accept the fire chief's report for March of 2024, to accept the inspection department report for March of 2024, to accept the public works department report for March of 2024, to accept the police department report for March of 2024, and accept the harbor report for March of 2024.
Second by Ms. Cullen. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Number three.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding for Jose Rosado's settlement.
Second by Ms. Rodriguez. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution associated with the Keystone Communities' grant application for the remaining $130,000 in gap funding needed to complete the Adams Hollow Creek Stream Bank stabilization project. needed to complete the Adams Hollow Creek Stream Bank stabilization project. $330,000 has already been secured from DCEP's flood mitigation program, FMD.
Second by Mr. Pezza, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed?
I have to abstain.
Okay, Mr. Petrosi abstains. Number five.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the contract with PR Painting co-stars to paint the interior of the borough building, including the police and fire areas and exterior of the building in the amount of $202,100.
Second by Mr. Cousin, questions or comments? There is a contract, and everybody's packing, I don't know if you guys had a chance to look at it, but it's in there. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to accept retirement of Thomas Wallach for letter dated March 17, 2024.
Second by Mrs. Rodriguez, questions or comments?
Congratulations to Tom.
I would like to, I think we should bring Tom in here for a meeting and publicly honor him, he's been a great small town employee, both at the sewer plant and public work, but I think he would be good.
He's definitely going to be missed. I mean, he's a good worker, borough's losing it, a valuable employee.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules for the, we have to...
Wait, we got a, we got a motion right now.
Oh, sorry, go ahead, finish.
Got a motion on the floor, second by Ms. Rodriguez, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Okay.
I'm not hurry, am I? I'd like to suspend the, I'd like to motion, suspend the rules.
So we got a motion to suspend the rules, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the proposal by DVR PC to install bike racks and benches in the borough.
Second by Mr. Pezza, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? The only thing I want to just, before we leave, the road's going to be open tomorrow, everybody understands that, it's beautiful, and we also want to thank State Senator San Acero, our state rep Tina Davis, for providing the funding to make that corner pop, but it is something special if you go down there. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn.